You guys can't see that as well.
As long as you can, you guys are more important.
We're online.
All right. Call to order, the June 18th, 2024 meeting of the Long Lake City Council. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 PM. All council members are present tonight except for Councilmember Joyce. She is absent with prior notice. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening again. Well, item three is mayor comments, Long Lake News, meeting reviews and updates. Nothing too out of the ordinary report over the last couple of weeks here since the last time we met. We'll talk about some fire-related updates here in upcoming agenda item. Went to the Wayzata Crime Prevention Coalition meeting last Tuesday along with other representatives, Brian Miller and Tim Holtman. We talked about the national, or excuse me, Night See Night coming up first Monday in August and maybe some programming changes for that. Kind of like to change things up a bit each year. Other than that, they're, things are going well. Wayzata Police are doing, staffing-wise, doing well. They're very busy in their downtown area with traffic enforcement and other things. And they will be joining us at some events this coming, this summer here, throughout the summer. Besides that, yeah, nothing, nothing's coming to mind that has, that has occurred in the last two weeks that's really not fire-related. So with that, we'll move on to item four, which is to approve tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second, thank you. All right, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, segment five by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item five, consent agenda. We have a pretty, pretty large consent agenda tonight. Items A through I on the consent agenda. I know we're going to get update from staff shortly on upcoming community events. So several of the consent agenda items are community events. We'll talk more about in detail. But I'd like to point out, item D is in David, which is promoting Michael Decker from Public Works seasonal maintenance worker to the position of Public Works Maintenance Worker One. So that is an update there or a promotion, I should say. And then item E is accepting the resignation of firefighter James or JB Seals from the Long Lake Fire Department. So we thank JB for his over six years of service to Long Lake Fire Department and the community served by the Long Lake Fire Department. And the rest of the items are again our special event items.
I wanted to give a shout out too to Jeanette because I think it came up that you had arranged to have the Wayzata Police do community outreach at the event as a, as a way of policing the event. So thank you for arranging that or suggesting it.
Not a problem.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for staff on the consent agenda items?
Well, the only thing I want to say is I, I think we have a pretty big WSB. And I assume a lot of that comes under, that's being reimbursed.
I do know we're in the stages of closing out a bunch of projects. There's a lot of inspections going on right now for closeouts and closing out letters of credit for Avavetta, Zavago and for the stacked projects. So there's some, a lot of ongoing there and yes, that would be reimbursable.
And then there's Perry's. The Dome.
The Dome, that was a zoning verification letter. I don't have a copy of that invoice because I make copies of claims paid. Or Mandy prepares them for council. But they did have a zoning verification letter on the Dome in preparation for a sale of the property. We do collect a fee for that.
Okay.
So there was that. It was a little bit of a complex one due to a number of zoning violations at the property at this time. So. But that is something that we typically do as a cost of doing business. I actually do, in order to save ourselves those costs, I do about 90% of our zoning verification letters and only outsource the complicated ones on an as-needed basis to Hannah. So it's a bit of an offset. We always collect the fee for the zoning verification letter. So, yes, but. We're in closeouts for all of those projects right now, working to obtain releases of letters of credit, maintenance bonds, this, that and the others. So there's a lot of activity going on there right now.
But all this, a lot of this is covered by their bond that they put up.
Mm-hmm.
I just always look and say, oh.
Or collectible if their escrow went over, correct?
Okay, okay.
All right, any other questions for staff about the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. Item six, open correspondence. Open correspondence is an item on the agenda in which the public may address the city council. No formal action is taken by the city council and comments shall be limited to five minutes or less. And as a note, open correspondence comments may also be mailed to city staff by noon on the date of the meeting. Anyone wish to approach for open correspondence? All right, looks like we have a taker.
I'll take you up on it. Maria Beach, I know most of you. I just wanted to come on behalf of Corn Days, say thank you for your support. It's the 50th year this year and wanted people to know we've kind of revamped and reinvigorated it. More food, more drinks this year. The parade, which is put on by the Chamber, is going to be bigger than ever by the sounds of it and is going really well. Lots of inflatables for the kids, a cornhole tournament for amateurs and for professionals, if you call it that. And just wanted to invite everyone to come out and visit us for the Corn Days event this year. Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you. All right, any email, other emailed correspondence? All right. So with that, we'll move on to item seven, regular business and specifically seven A, cancel July 2nd, 2024 city council meeting. Do you want to take this one, Jeanette?
Certainly, I know the council had some discussion at their last meeting about the feasibility of possibly canceling the July 2nd city council meeting due to everyone taking holiday time during that week. Some people have travel plans. We were kind of looking at our agenda business and anything active to see whether that was going to work. And really, the primary concern for me was whether or not the Buck Corn Day special event permit came in in time to get it on this agenda this evening. With that received and approved, there's really nothing from our area. And so if the council was still interested in doing so, we'd recommend the council consider taking action to cancel the July 2nd meeting. We don't have any pending agenda business as a staff unless the council has something in particular they'd like to discuss that night and we'd want to confirm we'll have a quorum in attendance for that.
Yeah, I know we touched on this at our last meeting and we're comfortable skipping a meeting. We don't, we don't normally skip meetings, but this seemed like a good time to do it, a good time of the year and everything, kind of quieter with business, so.
So should it, would it be on the 16th and then again on the 30th? And that would be the two meetings for the month?
We would just meet on the 16th. We wouldn't need to meet twice in the month.
Unless something comes up.
Unless something comes up.
On the 16th and we can do us for.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't mean that we couldn't call a special work session for a closed session type of deal. Yeah.
But don't we typically meet twice a month?
Yeah.
Yes, but you're not required to, yes.
Oh, oh, okay, so we're meeting.
Yeah, it should be that one.
Oh, okay, so, all right.
Instead of rescheduling the second, we're just, at this time, just.
Because upcoming.
They'll always have the option to add a meeting.
July 2nd on it, that's why I was confused.
Oh, and.
I think we kind of.
Yep, it's, it would just be canceling the July 2nd city council meeting and then therefore the council's next meeting date would be on Tuesday, July 16th.
Okay.
And then when we meet again, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
We're going to meet the.
You would only meet once in July unless the council decides at the meeting on the 16th that you would like to add another meeting in the month.
Got it.
I'm not sure you're looking at, but it is on listed here in our upcoming meetings on the agenda there. Okay, anybody have a strong objection to canceling the July 2nd meeting? All right, so do you, do you need a motion on that?
I think we would appreciate a motion, yes.
Okay. So I will make a motion to cancel the July 2nd, 2024 meeting of our city council.
Second.
Any further, this motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right, thanks Jeanette, that was seven A. Now seven B, highlighting upcoming community events. Take it away. Busy summer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take an opportunity to kind of do a quick rundown of the events that were approved on tonight's consent agenda, starting in order with Buck Corn Days. So the Long Lake Area Chamber did make their annual application to bring Buck Corn Days back again on Saturday, July 13th. It'll be 95% of it in Nelson Lakeside Park with, they're moving the car show to the Pioneer Museum grounds, which is kind of a, you know, really cool tie-in with that being a history center here for Long Lake and the surrounding area. So hopefully it might be a nice opportunity to do a little cross-promotion over there as well. There, it'll be kind of the usual scope, you know, kids' zone, general arts crafts, food and beverage vendors. Well, those will start opening at noon. Have live entertainment pretty much all day. Doggy races again at 3 o'clock. Beanbag toss and putting contests will be held from 3 to 6. And that musical entertainment is anticipated to go from noon to 11 right now. So this year's event will not have a waterski show or a fireworks display. Timing was kind of becoming of the essence and so they're going to stick with the live entertainment this year and with the offerings, you know, and the very family-friendly activities that they've proposed. So, so that'll be something to look forward to for Saturday, July 13th. Next up, of course, we do have Corn Days. And again, 50th Annual, it's also the 50th Annual Corn Days Parade that the Chamber will be holding. Corn Days has been really such a wonderful community event. Sarah Dorr, who has been the event organizer, or at least the applicant on behalf of Corn Days, always does such a beautiful job organizing and giving us this wonderful information about, you know, all their list of events. So really, all sorts of fun will be happening there from noon till 10 o'clock. You know, food booths, beer tent, merchandise vendors, inflatables, petting zoo, cars and corn. Let's see here. Bingo in the Community Center, live music, more live music. So it'll, it'll, caricature artist is going to be there this year. Glitter hair will be there, so it'll be a hair artist.
Yes.
Exactly, you know, raffle drawing, silent auction bidding. It's, it's always just a really, really wonderful, family-friendly, true community-minded event. So just wanted to highlight that for Saturday, August 10th. Put that on your schedule and the full event schedule is probably up by now on the event website at corndays.com. The parade, of course, will be held at noon. The Long Lake Area Chamber of Commerce was able to get in their event permit application for that as well, which is why we had such a stacked consent agenda this evening. They'll be staging along Willow Drive, following, following the same route as always. So very much looking forward to seeing what all of those events are going to bring to Long Lake and really hoping that the monsoon weather we seem to be struck with here finally abates so that these events have wonderful weather for everyone to get out and enjoy them.
Great, yeah, lots going on and yeah, Corn Days was great last year, I think. So it was first, first time on a Saturday last year, I believe. So the parade was, you know, the attendance was a little dismal. I think just mostly it's because people were like maybe not used to being on a Saturday. For 49 years it's been on Sundays. So whatever we can do to, we'll certainly help out St. George's advertise that and everything with their city resources and get, get folks there and it's a great community event. And I swear the 50th anniversary was last year, but. Phew, is that, can I do that with my age? Can I say?
I have been told that was a bit of a whoops, at least on the parade side of things. So the parade had put the 50th anniversary of the parade on their application last year. But they said after reviewing that, this is the 50th Corn Days Parade.
Long Lake has string that along.
So we'll see what happens next year.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Either way, it is a wonderful longstanding tradition that I think we can, you know, really be proud to see happening in our, in our really lovely community, so.
Agreed.
I do have one question though, when it comes to the Corn Days Parade. I am wondering if the council would again, of course, like to ride in the steer Baker, Chief Highland? And if so, is there a primary point of contact for the council that I could put on the parade entry form? Because I'll fill something out there to get that into the Chamber.
Everybody, first of all, everybody planning on being around? I mean, it's a couple of months out, but planning on being around?
Saturday, July, or August 10th, sorry?
Yeah, otherwise, yeah, I'm pretty sure I'll be in town and so I'm going to.
I think I would too.
Fifty-fifty if I'm in town. Okay.
Is anyone willing to be the contact point person?
I will.
Okay, thank you for that. I will get it filled out and just copy you on it.
Thank you.
And it's really a logistics thing more than anything. I know they kind of end up chatting with me a bit, but I need to give a point person just for the.
Did we have new signs last year that we're going to use again?
We still have them, yep.
Sharp with the matching shirts and everything, remember?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, we've got that fancy new logo stuff out there.
That's when you came with your Excelsior shirt on, right?
You guys didn't do much writing, you just walked along and threw candy, yeah.
Right, a good picture you run in, I still remember it kind of in action.
It's always good to have a pre-plan with the candy too, though. She's been caught short a little bit.
Right, right. Yeah, it's a, it's a good workout for sure with throwing that candy. Okay.
I will be sure to get that taken care of. I made an arrangement this year with the Chamber that we would kind of, we've been doing a little more bartering in the system these days. So we waived their event permit fee for them waiving our parade float fee. So it's just, you know, partnerships. So. And actually, I do, to give credit where credit is due, it was actually Chief Schultz at Wayzata that had mentioned to me a couple of years back that maybe in lieu of requiring an officer, you know, they're always looking for opportunities to have police presence. So my only role in that was really to connect the dots between the players. And I'm, and it sounds like it was really successful last year. And Wayzata PD is very much looking forward to being there again in that more like booth, community engagement capacity, so.
Well, the Chamber appreciates it.
Oh, good, good, wow. They're looking forward to having some fun out there, they like it, so.
Okay, so you, you don't need a motion for this, right? Because you already passed it all.
All of the events were approved, just wanted to have a chance to give, give those wonderful events a little airtime.
Yeah, agreed. So thank you for doing that, looking forward to, to everything and fingers crossed for good weather for them. Okay, item seven C, updates regarding fire department matters. So we mentioned a lot, a fair amount's happened over the last couple of weeks when it comes to fire department matters. I guess the most significant to point out is just, you know, yesterday we had mediation with City of Orno court ordered mediation, or third court ordered mediation. It was with a, a new, a new mediator this time, a different mediator, Hennepin County Judge in this case. Previous two times we had a retired Supreme Court Justice who was our mediator and, and both sides agreed just, you know, a third time, so mix it up a little bit and try a different one. And we were there, both sides were there from about 1:30 in the afternoon and I think maybe left close to 6:30 in the evening or 7 o'clock, something like that. So it was a, a long afternoon, absolutely. But in the end, unfortunately, there was no real resolution to the, to the matter. We plan on, you know, putting out maybe a little listserv message about this shortly. But the nothing, nothing, nothing to walk away with per se with, with this mediation unfortunately. I think both sides were hopeful. As we've mentioned before, we can't, no, neither side can discuss what was, what occurred to mediation. There's a state law or a rule of criminal procedure that prohibits ads, so we can't get any details about what was discussed. But no resolution is, is the summary of that, so unfortunate there.
Who represented Orno? I mean, I, I appreciate that it was you and John that were there for Long Lake and who was there for Orno?
Councilmember Johnson and Mayor Walsh were there for Orno, right, along with legal staff. And yeah, I think all sides were taking a better, both, our side was taken about it back a bit by, you know, Mayor Walsh came to the mediation wearing shorts and flip flops, you know, to, to an event in, in a courtroom with, with the judge and, and things like that. So it kind of, I think, kind of set the tone for the day unfortunately. But in the end, there was no, no real outcome there, as I mentioned. So that's mediation, you know, not, not clear that there'll be another one. If Judge Miller rules, there'll be another one, then we would certainly partake in that. But as of now, that's kind of been put aside and I believe mediator or the, i.e. the judge has to report back to Judge Miller on the, the fact that mediation has at least occurred. So that's been a development. Also, besides that, we've just been going kind of back and forth a bit with the City of Orno regarding developments that we found out about a couple of weeks ago regarding a change to their, their, a modification that may be needed to the request they made to their service area back a year ago in June of 2023. And I can touch on that or if others want to touch on that and just kind of give some updates when it comes to that. I was looking for some timeline that I put together regarding that. And, and essentially, we had, we had a fire, just maybe I'll kick it off. We had a fire forum on May 30th, as we all know. And by the way, that's up, up on the, on the website now, the YouTube website of the Lake Minnetonka Communications Commission. So we appreciate their work doing that. I know we talked about the forum at our last council meeting, but now the web, that video is live. So encourage residents, check that out. I know we've sent it out in our listserv as well, gotten a fair amount of views of it. And so we encourage residents to watch that and those serve by the Long Lake Fire Department. So briefly, at that event on May 30th, we mentioned, we had a slide that was presented by Councilmember Feldman that, that mentioned Orno Fire Department does not have a boat, was a quote from that slide. That was something that we were, you know, really, I guess, aware of just through maybe following what's going on in Orno council meetings or through the grapevine or whatever the case might be. And then in that meeting also, former Mayor Gabe Jabor, during the public comment period of the event, he pointed out the fact that City of Orno does not have a, have a boat to service the area that they have stated they're going to take over. And the very next day, but we learned of an email that, that exchange that occurred that was initiated by Hennepin County Sheriff's Dispatch, a supervisor there, that requested more information because there was some confusion there about who's going to be covering the lake and I don't, you know, we'll cover that maybe in more detail. So that was the next day on May 31st. And then we had a discussion about this with City of Orno representatives at the Fire Advisory Board meeting the following week on June 4th. Had a candid discussion about that. That's, that discussion was recorded, it's on our, on our website and available. There was, you know, kind of some, some confusion, I would say, on, on that, on perhaps both sides. And, and then we had a council meeting that same evening. And little did I know, or at least that would be a KSTP story about that just a couple hours later, that I think most people had, had, have watched, in this room at least. And then at the June 10th meeting, the Orno City Council last week, there's a fair amount of discussion about this topic as well. And we have sent a letter to Orno, our city administrator sent a letter to Orno. Don't have that in front of me at the moment, but that, the letter draws out this, this issue or highlights this issue and, and the fact that this area is, there is not, the two bays, Lake Minnetonka bays that are fully enclosed in the, in the map that was sent to us in June of 2023 are apparently not being covered by the Orno Fire Department and we're being requested to cover that area as far as I know. But we want to ensure that that's done, you know, legally, contractually. So we'll be following up on that with the City of Orno. So that's how I want to kick off any of the conversation a bit or highlight it. But others have things they want to say about that? John or Mike?
I'll go first. I want to throw these up on the projector. So at the June 10th Orno Council meeting, Mayor Walsh made several statements about the importance of having fire protection readiness to cover their residents. Otherwise, as he puts it, residents are at risk. And then he went on to comment about the question that I brought up at our Fire Advisory Board meeting regarding coverage of two Lake Minnetonka bays, Forest Lake and North Arm Bay that fall entirely inside the response zone that Orno stated they would take over starting July, July 1st. That zone was defined in a letter that came in June of 2023 last year. And we since learned on May 30th of this year, three weeks ago, that Orno was expecting Long Lake Fire to cover those two subzones within their calling area. Walsh said at his last council meeting that the only people who are confused about the new coverage agreement starting July 1st is Long Lake City Council. In fact, he calls out Mayor Minor and myself in particular as being confused and not aware enough to ask our Long Lake Fire Department, who apparently clearly knew that Long Lake Fire was supposed to cover Forest Lake and North Arm Bay. All we needed to do was call our people to get the answer, he said. It's about communication, he said. It's ironic that he says it's about communication since that's the very thing that Orno lacks, or maybe I should say Orno lacks honest communication. I normally ignore Mayor Walsh's outrageous lies on social media and the Orno Council meetings, but since he called me out, I will respond. And my response also relates to a letter that we received from Adam Edwards on behalf of the City of Orno. In that letter, Mr. Edwards writes, while this seems to have been clear to Orno, Orno Fire, Long Lake Fire and Hennepin County, it does not appear to have been clear to Long Lake City Council. This is the same messaging that Walsh stated at the council meeting. So let me share the truth. There was never a formal communication from Orno to Long Lake Fire Department, Long Lake Fire Chief, Long Lake City Administrator, Long Lake Mayor or Long Lake City Council. The letter that was received in June of 2023 stated, beginning July 1st, 2024, the city fire service area for the City of Orno shall be as depicted in the map attached here as Exhibit A. And Exhibit A is the one on the left. The area of Orno removed from the Long Lake Fire Department service area is identified by orange highlighter and consists of CAD zones 75F-200 and 75F-210. And Exhibit A was a map with their orange highlighted boundary around those two CAD zones, as you see on the left side. Then in their recent letter, June of 2024, they stated, the intention of the modification or the, the intention of the notification was for the land areas only and not intended to apply to the computer-aided dispatch CAD zones specified to Lake Minnetonka itself. And they now shared a new map with the subzones shown separately. That's the one on the, on the right. There was nothing in that first letter that stated this intention and nothing was communicated since before May 30th. It was stated that even Hennepin County knew the intentions of Orno. This is another lie. An email from Hennepin County Dispatch to Long Lake Fire on May 30th stated, and this is a quote, "July 1st, Forest Lake Zone will transfer to Orno, correct?" This email then led to the question of intention from Long Lake Fire to Orno Fire. It was only then that Orno Fire Chief responded, those areas should be covered by Long Lake Fire Department. So neither Long Lake Fire Department nor Hennepin County were clear on the intentions prior to May 30th. Had we not sent an email that day, it would still be unknown. At our Fire Advisory Board meeting, it was stated by our Assistant Fire Chief that he assumed that the Long Lake Fire would be covering these bays. And if Walsh had listened to the recording, he would have heard me ask our Assistant Fire Chief if that assumption was only by default because Orno doesn't have a boat. And he said yes. So there was never any communication from Orno to Long Lake regarding this matter. You can't exercise a contract by assumptions. And, and, and now I, I believe Orno was trying to cover it up, quietly sweep it under the rug. And now that it's been exposed, they make it sound like it's such a minor detail. Even the Orno Fire Chief said at our Fire Advisory Board meeting that there are hardly any calls in those subzones. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. One is too many if someone isn't there to re, respond. And by the way, regarding intentions, when Orono Fire Chief presented his needs assessment last year around the same time as they sent us that letter that removed that call area, his needs assessment stated that Orono Fire Department not, needs not only one boat, but two boats to effectively respond to all their water zones. Mayor Walsh stated at the end of his comments that Long Lake should focus on their own fire department rather than worry about what Orono is doing. And my response to that is, we are looking out for Long Lake. And that's why there are two contempt orders against Orono, not for starting their own fire department, but for, for violating their contract with us and trying to dismantle the Long Lake Fire Department. And then just to add a couple of comments about some of the other, or some of the other comments made by uh, some of the other council members. Uh, one brought up mutual aid and uh, and uh, these, these were nonsensical to me because it, it, it really wasn't relevant. Uh, he, he stated that uh, in the police, uh, Orono provides significant mutual aid to, to Long Lake, so sort of subsidizing our YZDA coverage. And I, a couple of years ago, we, we pulled some numbers to look at mutual aid, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but um, we, 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 we saw that there, mutual aid went both ways. So YZDA responded uh, with mutual aid to Orono and, and the numbers were pretty balanced. So it's not like we're getting some free, for some freebie from Orono that they're not receiving anything in return for. And then he also then started talking about uh, the, about this issue of these lakes of the, or Forest Lake and, and North Arm Bays. Um, he, he, he was using mutual aid as, as sort of a, making a case about, you know, why would, why wouldn't you provide mutual aid? And, and he was conflating mutual aid with first response. I mean, you, yes, we, obviously we would, we would provide mutual aid. In fact, we're gonna cover this area. I mean, we're not gonna leave somebody unprotected, but it should be under the contract. And, and I think Deirdre's gonna say some more about that. But um, you, you, you have to have a first, a, a, a first response area. I don't know what you call it, Mike. What, what, it's, it's a?
Auto aid?
Well, not even auto aid. I'm just thinking like,
Primary?
A primary service area, right? And that's the one that dispatch calls. And then mutual aid gets called out. But, but that, that's not what we have here. We, we have an area that Orono said they were going to cover. And now we learn at the 11th hour that they're not, and they're gonna expect us to cover it. That's not an, an issue of mutual aid. That's an, an issue of like, whose, whose area is this to respond to? So, and then uh, just another comment about, another council member's comment that Long Lake will not have a seat at the table in any future fire department arrangement. And uh, I think again, nonsensical because he said the partnership, you know, has to be 50 50, or maybe it could be 60 40, but there's no way that Long Lake, and he kept changing the numbers, you know? It's, it went from 85% and 5%, which is not correct. It's 10% for Long Lake, but 85% and then went to 90 and 95% versus 5%. And, and you're not gonna have a seat at the table at that arrangement. And I, I'd remind him that he should look at our, our neighbors to the south, uh, where, which is made up of five cities. Shorewood has a population of 7,600, Deep Haven, 3,800, Excelsior, 2,300, Tonka Bay, 1,500, and Greenwood, 700 residents. And they made it work. So Greenwood is one tenth the size of Shorewood. And so it, it's just these nonsensical statements that just flabbergasted me and I just wanted to comment on that. So that's all I had.
All right. Thank you, John. It was a lot, a lot of ground to cover from that, Orono's last meeting. Deirdre, did you want to say something?
Do you want me to repeat what I said to the work session? Cause I kind of, um, I look at this. I look at, um, we entered in an agreement October 15th, 2002 between the City of Long Lake, Orono and Medina. The agreement spells out a lot of different responsibilities, including if we were to go to a fire command responsibility. Subject to the terms of agreement, the Fire Chief of Long Lake or the chief's designee shall have sole and exclusive right and responsibility to prescribe the manner and method of giving the alarm for fire within the total fire service area. There's also requirements for liability insurance, uh, operational responsibility. And my point to that is, we provide fire service through Long Lake Fire Department, the city's agreement, based on particular terms. There's terms that define how we're gonna respond. And I mentioned that, and the fact that in Provision 21, there is a provision to, to either increase or reduce the service area. So during a period of agreement, a contracting city may request that its city fire service area be reduced or increased in size. Such a request must be made prior to July 1st of the contracting year to allow time for preparing the annual fire service budget for the succeeding contract year. So we did receive a notice from the City of Orono, and I think John already touched on this, June 15th, 2023. And it cited this provision in the contract and said accordingly, the City of Orono hereby specifies and notifies the City of Long Lake, which is a specific notification under contract terms. Beginning July 1st, 2024, the city fire service area for Orono shall be depicted in the map attached here as Exhibit A, which is up on the screen. The area of Orono removed from the Long Lake Fire Department service area is identified in orange highlighter and consists of CAD zone 75F 200 and 75F 210. So it was effectively removed from the contract and it is no, the notice is not ambiguous. It's circled. It gave Long Lake notice that it was removed from the contract. So we did later get this year, and I'm just flipping through things, a letter from Orono and I have, I wasn't involved in any of the other discussions, but June 10th, 2024, that, oh, that was not that. Yeah, it's June. The original letter, um, that they were, that they wanted to add service area back under the contract. They wanted to add the area that was bounded by the lake areas of um, North Arm Bay and Forest Lake.
That's when they sent the one on the right outlining those.
Yep.
June, June 10th.
So they're adding June 10th, it was June 10th. They're adding those areas uh, back into the contract. Okay. It's June 10th, 2024. And they want to add that back into the contract. And according to that same Provision 21, they can add that back into the contract. Um, but they need to give the, the required notice. And they're outside of the notice period for this and they would have to wait for next year. And I think uh, we've discussed this before. If they add it back in, in the interest of public safety, uh, we could waive the notice requirement, but it should go according to the contract terms. We need a contract. So if they need to, if they want to add it back in because they're unable to service this area, we need to clearly identify that they want to add it back in and that it should go according to the contract. And we discussed this during our work session. So because we need to have clear terms regarding who is responsible for what. And it should be, um, also go through, in my opinion, Medina as well, if they're gonna add this service area back into the contract.
Since they're part of the contract as well, sure. I always like that. Appreciate when you put your attorney hat on, Deirdre, and give us your, your background. That's very helpful information. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I was gonna say a couple of words about some of the numerics, the 5%. And it is just so ridiculous that it's not worth our time, to be honest. Um, people that want to go look at, at the video. Um, it's just fabricated numbers on, on budgets. There's a couple of things that were said that I, I think are, are worth um, speaking to. Um, the first one is, you know, focus on our own fire department, not the Orono Fire Department. Um, I, I read through the emails, the, the exchange between dispatch and our, and our fire leadership. Um, one thing that I've, I've, by reading that, it is very clear that, that the letter they sent us about everybody being, you know, understanding their intent. And again, when you write a contract, it isn't about intent. It's about what is actually stated in the contract. Um, and when you, when you, when you read this, it's very clear there's confusion on every, in everyone's part. But it's the fact that our fire leadership actually understood the Orono Fire Department's lack of preparation that kind of saved this thing for them. And we, we at least have somebody being paged that is capable of responding. So um, I appreciate uh, our, our leadership in the Fire Department understanding what's going on and, and wanting to cover the residents, not only in Long Lake, but in the neighboring communities. But as Deirdre said, we do need to focus on the fact, this is a contract. They did remove this and we need to, we need to focus on that. Um, and there's one other thing that I also picked up when I listened to the audio. When Mr. Van Iel stated that hardly any calls happen in that zone. I mean, just logically, it's, it's, to me, it's, it's uh, I don't know the words to describe it other than it's very disappointing that that logic exists. And I'll tell you that how many, how many times were, were fire and rescue called to my home last year? Well, zero. But that's just, the mentality of that is not that of, of public safety. The, the fact is you don't look and say, how many calls were there and then dismiss that? We're here to, to cover those risks and mitigate them as a community together. And I was very disappointed in that comment coming from uh, from uh, somebody who's in fire and safety leadership.
All right. Thank you. Uh, good, good, good comments, everyone. And um, very, very disheartening to hear some of this. I'm glad that the Hennepin County Sheriff's Dispatch Supervisor, I believe, noticed this. Cause imagine if, you know, it was July 3rd or July 4th coming up here and there was a call and they had trouble figuring out which fire department to dispatch to a boat fire or a fire along the shoreline or that kind of thing. And that's not the time to be figuring this stuff out. So thank goodness for that. Um, one thing I want to address is maybe a little different angle is just this, you know, we're, we're, this is our last council meeting before July 1st. And we've been kind of beating this drum here for the last couple of months. And now that, now we're getting down to the wire here. And I'm just really concerned about this, uh, what they're, what Orono's doing and their lack of, of a focus on public safety on this matter as July 1st approaches. They've been um, stating very publicly and that, and they being really just um, two or three members of their city council, or maybe even four, stating very publicly that they're, they're ready to go. They're all, they're all set. They're fully prepared. They're fully equipped. They're fully staffed. And that's just really not true. And if they were responsible in caring for the, the safety of their citizens, they would uh, push the state back a bit, even, you know, a couple of months, three months, whatever the case might be. Um, so examples of what we're talking about. And we've been sending letters to Orono, uh, emails. Most, most recent example is a letter from our city administrator in June 7th, just a couple of weeks ago, uh, when this boat issue was discussed. And then we also pointed out their, um, their, their deadline is approaching here and they're still waiting for equipment and tanker truck and things like that. We've been offering, kind of almost begging for them to at least uh, extend this by, by some time, to give them some time to be formal, to be more fully prepared. And they unfortunately have not taken us up on this. But their mayor, for example, has been, you know, sending out Facebook posts over the last, um, over the last several weeks saying things like, uh, this is gonna be the best service the area has ever had. And that is such an, uh, a misnomer, so, so untruthful that it is sending such a, a, a mixed message to, to residents. And that's, um, it's just as a, as somebody who's been in public safety for about 35 years, starting in actually in Orono, for the Orono Police Department, it's just really disheartening for me to see that in our community that, that, that misinformation is being spread about what's the most important function of government is public safety. It's not, it's not pickleball courts. It's not shelters, picnic shelters, or golf courses. It's not some of the other uh, things that are, are seen to be a higher priority by our sister city. It's public safety. So for example, um, they are not, uh, they're, they're taking over service on July 1st in an area that has, they, they continually refer to it as the Navarre-Cascow Point area, but it's really uh, about a third of the southwestern corner of their city. And only about a third of that area they're taking over has fire hydrants. In other words, the other two thirds, two thirds of the area does not have fire hydrants. And the only way to fight a fire at an area without fire hydrants is with what, uh, tankers, tanker trucks. And at the last Monday Orono council meeting, this was brought up. Um, it, it started by um, Mr. Van Iel kind of indicating they're fully set and ready to go uh, for July 1st. But then when a council member started drilling down onto that and asking really more specific questions, there's, there's only unfortunately one council member who's actually asking questions that are along the lines of, are we prepared? Are we ready to go? Who has a, a public safety mindset? This council member asked um, if they're, if they had everything that they needed by July 1st. And the response from Mr. Van Iel was, was initially, uh, hopefully. And that referenced that hopefully everything would be delivered by the July 1st start date. But then when the council member drilled down on that and asked to get more details about what does that mean? When will the trucks arrive? Then there was a more candid response, which was that their, their tanker uh, truck may, is, was quoted as, uh, the manufacturer said it was due to arrive on June 30th. June 30th. That's, that's the day before they're taking over service. Now I, I've uh, you know, I've ran police car fleets and I've never once had a police car show up on time. It's, it's always late. And I know the same is true with fire trucks. Fire trucks, particularly in the post-COVID era, never show up on time. So that truck is almost guaranteed not to arrive on June 30th. So the response was that they're gonna rely on other departments for, for mutual aid and, and auto aid and things like that. Well, the first, the, any, any fire department who's going to service should be prepared from the start to provide that service, provide that equipment, not automatically relying on other departments to do it. In addition, uh, they do not have a medical or a rescue, rescue vehicle. Mr. Van Iel said that's not due to arrive till the end of July or August. So again, initially the, this quote was, it will hopefully be delivered by, uh, they'll hopefully be ready by July 1st. But now we're learning that's July or August. Now it's not, it's not, it's not their fault. We ordered one of the same exact vehicles, the same exact re, rescue truck, I think well over a year ago, and that's not arrived yet. Everything's taking longer. So I'm not, I'm not trying to come down on them for things taking long, for service delays. They have no control over that. But what they do have control over is the ability to extend this date and to buy some time to get, allow them to be fully prepared, to fully protect their residents, their businesses and other members of their community. And I wish they would do that. It's such a simple, simple thing to do. It's, would be no shame to do that. It's uh, we're, we're more than willing to accommodate that and fi, figure out contractually how that might work. But for them just to continue to say, we set this dates last June, uh, over a year ago, we set this date of July 1st. And no matter what, we're gonna go ahead, we're gonna continue on that date and do it. That is, that is ridiculous. You know, when they're planning, you know, the D-Day invasion or, or, you know, military, things like that, they had to make adjustments on weather and, and equipment and things like that. Obviously, we're not talking about D-Day here, but the point is when you have that much, much foresight, you're able to make adjustments accordingly to provide for the resources and equipment you need. And then the boat's been brought up as well, obviously, that, that uh, they, that's, they will not have a boat on July 1st either, even though in their needs assessment last June, it was stated that in 2024, they're gonna begin the process of acquiring, I believe it was two, two, two uh, fireboats to serve their Fire Department. So I just, and so that's the equipment aspect. There's also the personnel aspect, the firefighter aspect. When in this needs assessment I referenced that uh, was done last June, they stated that by when they went into, began service on July 1st, 2024, they would have 18 paid on call firefighters. And uh, we covered this in our forum a couple of weeks ago as well, but uh, they don't have 18. They have 11. And only nine of those are, are trained. Two are brand new. And we're recently hearing that one of those brand new members might be uh, resigning from the department. So that would bring them down to 10. And that is, uh, so if you add that, those, do those numbers as we presented in our forum a few weeks ago, that would mean that on average, out of those nine, a third firefighters, uh, paid on call firefighters are able to turn out for the average call. So calls that they're responding to from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, that's gonna be three firefighters on average showing up to a call. They'll be a little better covered during the daytime from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We'll have two duty crew out, duty crew members responding who are backed up by the, the nine paid on call or the 11, if depending on a few talk, trained members or not. So that's, as we showed on our slide, that's like a maximum of six. And that is just simply not enough to sufficiently uh, do anything. As, as pointed out in the needs assessment that Orono did, it's not enough to respond to a car accident with injuries. It's not enough to respond to a structured fire. Like a structured fire was 15. A, a car accident, it was, was 12 or 13 firefighters. So way, way, way below those minimums. So way, way, way below those minimums. And as was mentioned in the needs assessment as well, and I think it's an NFPA standard, there's a, a page from the needs assessment that Orno did. Quote, "The first five minutes of an incident will dictate how the next five hours will go." So that is, the importance there is that, you know, if, if they don't have a tanker truck on the scene, they don't have the adequate number of firefighters to, and, and the chief would know better, I don't know how, you know, exactly personally how many firefighters it takes to get an engine going and, and a pumper going and, and all that kind of thing. Just a ridiculous amount of deficiency there when it comes to their personnel. And, you know, as part of this, we're, you know, as part of this dialogue we've been having with Orno for the last six years, the concept has been, why don't we just become a customer of the Orno Fire Department? You know, why don't we just close up shop here in Long Lake, close on the Long Lake Fire Department and, and turn it over to, to Orno? And this is really just a clear-cut case of why we wouldn't do that, because they're not even being honest with their own residents, with their own business owners about their lack, their inability to be not, to their, their lack of preparedness or don't have the equipment that they need. That's not being candid, they're not being candid about that. So if, we can't expect them to be candid, if they're not being candid with the residents, we can't expect them to be candid with us as a contract city in that matter. And I would imagine that most other cities who, who would consider having fire service provided by Orno would think the same thing. So I'm not trying to, to go on a, you know, a, a kind of a bashing session against Orno. I know they did that to us last week and we, we've always tried to be kind of the, the nice people in this, in the public safety-minded people that we are. But my main point to summarize is that I just wish that they would take advantage of our, our offer to them to extend it by a couple of months, three months. Get everything ready to go, do a little more training, and more importantly, get the equipment that they need to be able to put out fires, respond to car accidents. Another thing is they're only going to have really one engine to respond, they're going to use a, a fire engine responded medical. So then if they're doing that and another call comes in, in that area, I have no idea how they're going to respond to that. And I imagine that's going to have to be completely mutual aid, whereas our Long Lake Fire Department has, has several vehicles that can be used to respond to a multiple incident scenario like that. There, there is not uncommon in last week, several cases in which there was multiple calls, the Long Lake Fire Department was, was responding to multiple calls at the same time, and I imagine that the odds are that that's going to happen in that area as well. And they just simply don't have the equipment to be able to do that now. So that is what I wanted to cover for the most part about some frustrations and really just this looming deadline that's occurring. I know we're going to be following up regarding this boat issue and sending a letter to Orno here in the very near future by the end of the week. And I'm sure we'll have that addressed as well, kind of one last plea to do what's right for, for public safety, for your residents, for your businesses in your city, and just hit the pause button for a little bit, nobody would, nobody would shame you for doing that. Any other comments that folks want to bring, staff, anything else? All right, that's kind of a draining issue for all of us, and as we've always talked about, this has taken a lot of our, our time and, and we're, we're, we're all doing a, as a great job at that, and dedicating a lot of, you know, yesterday and today, John and I and, and others. And appreciate, again, our, our partnership that we have in this and we all kind of did, did do our part with that, so thank you for that. Otherwise, with that, we'll move on to item, item eight then, which is other business. Any other business to bring up this evening, Councilmember Qualley?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Councilwoman Feldman?
Good, thank you.
All right, have anything else, Scott?
I'm good.
Chief, any pancake breakfast coming up or anything, or?
Not yet, I could give you an update on our, our new members.
Oh, that'd be great.
Uh, right now, we had two firefighters that just completed their firefighter one and firefighter two in their hazmat and they're getting ready to go to EMR. We have one firefighter that's currently in firefighter one. And then we have one firefighter that passed his background check, his medical check, his psychic value, and he's already ready to respond to station two. He lives in Tonka Bay and he's excited to be a part. And we have one firefighter that passed his background check and he's waiting on his medical. We have three firefighters that have been fingerprinted and they're waiting on their background checks. And we have one application outstanding. And then next Monday, Excelsior is going to bring out their engine for our drill next Monday night, and so we're going to be able to kick the tires and.
Oh, the one we're gonna?
Yeah, the one we're gonna buy, so we'll have a chance to look at.
So when will we get that, when will it be delivered?
Sometime in September.
So they've got their new one now?
That's what, it's going to be delivered sometime in September, when they get that, we'll, we'll get this one. And then, other than that, we're about halfway through our host testing, it's going really well, the duty crews are working hard at it. And, and then I just, this Friday morning, we're having breakfast, as I said again, just getting the two fire departments gathered and I have breakfast and discuss some future plans we can work at together. And, and then this weekend, they have, they have that art fair in Wayzata this weekend. And so we're going to be sending a couple of our guys down both Friday night and Saturday night to work with Wayzata Fire to just do standby at their event.
That's great.
That's great. Do they want to do any standby at anything in Long Lake?
I know, I was going to bring up another one, they have their, they have their summer picnic for their firefighters on July eighteenth. And so we're going to be doing a standby at their station for that too. So I think we need to line up a boat ride.
That'll be a busy day, cause I think it's a, is that Buckhorn Day, is it the eighteenth or?
I think that's a Thursday.
Oh, thirteenth, okay.
But that's about it.
That's a lot of good updates, appreciate that.
Thank you.
And, and like the, an amazing amount of calls, if you guys don't, you guys may not know this, but June has just been swamped. I mean, like two or three calls a day, it seems like on average, I've never seen probably so many calls, so.
Are people drowning in their vacuaries?
This is typical, I mean, July is always the busiest month of the year and we're, we're just starting to get into the busy season, so.
Really, you guys are responding a lot.
There's been two calls to those bays that we've been talking about, right?
Correct, in the same weekend.
Yeah.
And, you know, so basically, if, if all these guys make it through and we hire them all, we'll be at forty-seven members.
Okay.
So the Tonka Bay one, is, does he actually, is he on the Excelsior Department as well?
He is, he is, yep. And so he's trained and ready to go.
That's great. So you knew him.
Probably sign up to do the duty crew there, I suppose, huh?
Yeah, definitely.
On, on station two?
Yeah, he's a really good guy. I actually served with him for like three months at the end of my career at Excelsior, so.
That's good, because we need more duty crew participation at station two, right?
Correct, correct.
Nice, okay, good updates, Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeanette, anything else?
I'm a little surprised, but I have nothing.
Wow, wow, okay, okay, great. So city offices will be closed tomorrow in honor of Juneteenth. And back in business on Thursday, though. And then our next meeting is, we agreed to not meet on July second. So next meeting will be July sixteenth, kind of to be determined as far as if we have a clo, a work session, closed session, EDA meeting. See what staff suggests for that. Otherwise, council meeting on the sixteenth. So we have the Fourth of July between now and then, and yeah, I guess, I guess Buckhorn Days then too will be before we meet again.
I did send an email to our attorneys while we were in the meeting tonight to see if there was an interest in there being another extra work session this coming Monday, if they would be available. I did receive a response from one. I think we would probably want both, but I also don't know if the council would like me to pursue that or if we just.
I don't know, I, I don't know that a lot will come, I mean, I suppose the main thing is the, the interactions with Orno regarding this boats, lake situation and we're kind of leaving that in staff's hands to.
Yeah, so what, do we need to give staff direction on that? If we're going to request the signed contract mod or something to?
I would say.
Those areas back?
Yes, as I said, I, I think that's important. It's good to have a defined contract to go to.
Green?
And it's an addition, as I said.
Cause right now, there's no documentation. Well, I guess there's the email from, from Jameson Isle to.
But all the terms come in, I mean, we, we made an addendum for Jill Coonsy's house, so that all the terms would be applicable to that. So I think we should get an, an addendum, like we discussed in the work session. And I, I understand that how we're going to charge for it may be an issue, but there has to be a way that it's partly property value, because that's how our formula is based, it's area coming back in, and partly call volume. Cause as we talked about, it's fixed cost. So I think if we, if people are available, maybe a work session wouldn't be a bad idea, depending, it can be flexible depending on how they respond.
True.
Well, we're already counting property value in the formula for the shoreline, that's, but already there.
But it's removed, it's been removed though from.
Yeah. No.
The water has no.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, but, but you can't, so if you're suggesting that somehow you use the shoreline properties, but they're already being counted because that's part of the land coverage.
But they, they took the land.
Oh, oh, I, I see, okay, so we would pull some of that back in.
Yeah.
To, yeah, to, okay.
Cause as Mike said, Chief Highland said, it's not always clear, I mean, it, they can spill over.
Well, it, it can't, it has to be some, you know, some different arrangement. I don't, I don't think it can follow the formula exactly, but.
The only problem I would say with trying to resolve that issue in a work session, potentially on Monday night, more open session than closed session, because that's not a closed session matter really, would be that no, no matter what, you're not getting anything to them before their meeting.
Well, yeah, I was going to say that, yeah.
So there isn't any possibility of them actioning on it?
Well, then we'll have to do it after, after the fact, I mean, we'll just, somehow it's, it needs to be.
Well, we need to get the letter to them before the meeting, do that part, but you get, but we're not going to get a response from them before Monday night, because they're not meeting till Monday night, so I, I don't.
And, and again, you know, they're, you know, you, without being able to fully anticipate exactly what their response may be, we don't know if we'll be working with our city attorney to prepare an amendment or addendum. It's hard to know, I just.
They might be making other arrangements, you know, we don't know that either.
Mm-hmm, I, I don't know, of course, again, this is, it's the council's discretion. I'm just a little uncertain whether that Monday night work session would accomplish anything in time.
Right, and, and I, I believe Mr. Yetcom is going out of town, I think it was, was it, I'm not sure, it was next week, the week after, he might not be available anyways. But I think just, I mean, do you, are you clear enough on kind of what you're hearing from council and working with city attorney?
Yeah, from my understanding is that you guys are going to give some feedback and I can make any changes needed, then I can work with John Thames and we can get it out tomorrow. Or by the end of day.
Thursday.
Or Thursday.
Working on, but I did check with him, he'll be in the mo, work in the morning. So, yeah, I'll, I'll send a couple items that captured their work session, I'm going to send him a couple of things, suggestions to add to the letter. And, and then I think on Thursday morning, he and Scott can work that out and get that, get that off on Thursday morning. And then, and then, yeah, ask John if, if John believes that another closed session is needed in the next, you know, couple of weeks, let us know that, let John know that. That would be good. All right.
And I, I kind of, this is a sticky issue, but kind of looking at, how is Hennepin County going to page this out? Because if we're not contractually obligated to respond, I don't think we, our name should, Long Lake Fire should be the, the first fire department paged for areas that we're not covering.
Who should get called?
I don't know, we don't know.
There's no other option.
But we don't have an obligation to do that, it's not our obligation, contractually, we're not obligated.
I understand that, but it's a matter of public safety and we need to.
That's not our issue, though. We, we're not, we're not a backup for Orno. We're not the Orno Council, we're not the City of Orno, and we're not, they specifically withdrew it. So it's their responsibility to put it back in.
So I think, I don't know if you're saying that we shouldn't be on the page, they should get paged and then hit the mutual aid button?
Right.
To at least go through the mechanism.
Right, right, it, they, we're not on, they removed it, contractually, they're not on it. So if you ever got to court, they would say, well, we're not on it, we're not responsible, you're, you're not responsible.
But then would you auto-aid it, so that we're called simultaneously along with Orno or something, I don't know?
They do have some arrangements, like that other map you looked at where you can do that, yes.
And I bet it's already been pro, I'm assuming it's already been programmed that, and I know we've, we've been here all along, like this, you can't do these things overnight, like the programming and everything, so I think, I don't think we contact him and say, change it back, we, you know, you just changed a couple weeks ago, change it back.
But we're, we're doing it without a contract, so we, we're like literally, we have no obligation to do this and we're sticking our neck out without a contract?
And the goal is to have something signed by?
I would say.
June thirtieth.
We're not responding, we shouldn't be first. I think we should notify Hennepin County that we have no legal obligation to respond, it's been specifically told. I mean, why have a contract? Why have a notice requirement?
So what you're saying is we should respond, but only by mutual aid?
Right.
Yeah, I saw, thanks for the clarification, because that sounds very harsh and I mean, public safety is number one. And we need to make sure it's covered. However, your point is.
We're not primarily responsible.
They extracted this, the reality is the contract says we have no obligation.
Yeah.
But we know they, Orno is not ready, Orno is not prepared, Orno cannot do this. And these are real people and real lives at stake, so we need to be the adults in the room and respond to this area. So I think your point is, yes, have it paged out, but then be mutual aid, but I think practically speaking, that's too hard to do with short notice.
So we, we never have a contract, because we're going to respond automatically?
Right now, it is, it's going to call Long Lake Fire. Because that's what.
But we have no contract, we're doing it without a contract.
But the fact is, that's what it is right now today, correct?
I think we should send a notice to Hennepin County that right now, we're not under contract to respond. We, Long Lake Fire could not ask Plymouth to respond to us without a contract, and we could just say, Hennepin County, put them first. So I think we should be as mutual aid partners or, um, um, what do you, what do you call it, auto aid? But we shouldn't be the first responders, they took it out. If something happens, who's responsible when somebody shows up? I mean.
As of right now, then yeah, as us being the primary to us, our liability is the responsible party. But if you did put in auto aid or mutual aid, from my understanding, is the primary is primary liability.
That's what I'm talking about, we have no contract with them.
That would cover.
Does it even come under our liability insurance, it was removed.
Well, that's, that's why we'd probably want to have the CAD zone changed to an auto aid or, or.
That's what I'm talking about.
And I don't think the two sub CAD zones would take too much, but I, again, I don't know, we can look into that, but I think that's something that, you know, needs to be identified.
Could we ask dispatch if, you know, what it would take to make it so they, Orno is the primary, but we will auto-aid or mutual aid like right away, you know, auto, you know, somehow automatically?
Yeah, you could set it up so we get auto-aided on the first page. But right now, we won't get paged to that area till July first, so.
Right, but yeah, but starting, but right now, they have it set up that July first, they'll still be calling Long Lake Fire for that.
Correct.
But they took it out of the contract, and what I'm just saying is, we have a contract and we're saying, oh, it doesn't matter.
No, so what you're, what you're proposing is it won't change the response times to that area, because we will respond to it. But it, we, we, we won't be considered the primary.
That's exactly it, because we would do that to another partner and we are, for public safety, doing it for a partner.
So what we're saying is we're not putting the contract, or, or we're not putting public safety at risk.
No.
But we're just saying we want to have it in the contract the way it ought, should, should be.
Exactly, we will respond, but we're not primarily responsible, and we're not primarily responsible under this contract. I think that's what you said.
So page us at the same time as auto aid, but as the contract is currently, this is not in our coverage responsibility.
Yes.
I think, yeah, I think that the liability, huh?
Page us as auto aid, because we need to make sure we get out there immediately.
Then it won't require a contract mod, because then we're just saying, we're, we're honoring your June of twenty twenty-three request to pull that service area, and we're gonna mutual aid you on those...
Well, I think after a while, the mutual aid starts to become an, um, I, I know the rules governing mutual aid and auto aid, like if, um, you look, we look at those numbers, how many times do we auto aid? If we're auto aiding a hundred percent of the time, then that's...
Your question is, is how mutual is the mutual aid?
Yeah.
If it's totally...
Cause are we the primary responders and that's it? At one point, we, you know, you wanna say, maybe that's not a, a viable contract either. I mean, cause when you have auto aid contracts with other municipalities, you've brought those statistics to us and said, yes, we auto aided this much, but we got, we received auto aid from this many people, so there's a balancing act. And if it's not, the auto aid isn't being used as a supplement, but is being used as the primary responder, then that seems, that that's not really, that's a breach of those agreements, I'm assuming.
Chief, do you have any thoughts procedurally?
Well, we'd have to check to see what it would take to get, to get those two CAD zones switched back. I, I don't think it's impossible, but, uh, you know...
But they were never switched out. They, they've say, so she never changed it. She was gonna change it on May thirtieth. She said, so Forest Lake's going to Orno, right? And, and then we said no, because that was the exchange between, uh, Orno and Long Lake Fire at, at that time. So it was never changed. Uh, or, or, you know, as of July first, it will, it'll be, as it is right now, it'll be as it's always been. But we're saying, change it, or, or what'll, can you change it to Orno being the primary, but us, um, as mutual aid or, or auto aid?
Yeah, correct. I think on the example on the left, though, it was set up so both of those areas would get paged. We were taken out of the area at that point.
Right, but dispatch never did that.
Correct.
Yeah. They asked the question, because they were looking at the one on the left. So they said, oh, Forest Lake's going Orno, right? And then that started that conversation between us and, and Lo- and Orno.
All right, yep. All right, I think it's probably best that the staff will, especially with John Thames from a liability standpoint, you know, you guys, three of you worked, worked this out and see what the best way is to do this, and we're obviously not meaning to give them for that anyways, and I mean, the main thing needs, uh, be, we can't have any, you know, every second counts, so we can't have any kind of ambiguity on who's responding, and we can't, we don't need to go to an Orno Fire, um, officer, and then they say, well, we'll call Long Lake Fire. We can't have any of that. It's gotta be immediate, so whatever the solution is.
Going, no question.
Good.
Hundred percent.
Perfect. All right, so I think that was my la- the last call, and second, final last call. If not, I will adjourn the meeting by general consent at seven forty-three PM.
Hey, Jeanette, I believe the first week...